The seating is open. The court meets this afternoon to continue the oral argument of Somalia. Before I give the floor to the next speaker on behalf of Somalia, I wish to make a brief procedural comment, which is to say that shortly before the opening of the oral proceedings yesterday, the registry received a letter from the co-agent of Kenya, to which Somalia responded late last night. Those letters, taken together, present the possibility that these oral proceedings will continue beyond today. As a result, while the court had originally expected Kenya to read its final submissions today on the basis that this would be its last session, the court has decided instead that the reading of Somalia’s final submissions will be deferred to a later date, and the court will be in touch with the agents in respect of the scheduling for that session. With that behind us, I now give the floor to Mr. Paul Reichler. You have the floor, Mr. Reichler.
Madam President, members of the court, good afternoon. It’s an honor to appear before you today and a privilege to do so on behalf of Somalia. My task today is an uncommonly uncomplicated one. Thanks to the elegant presentation by my esteemed colleague, Professor Miron, my path forward has been plowed, cleared, and paved. As Professor Miron has shown you, the appropriate method for delimiting the maritime boundary between Somalia and Kenya, the only appropriate method in the circumstances of this case, is the tried and true three-stage process that the court has consistently employed in its maritime delimitation cases since its 2009 judgment in the Black Sea case. Professor Miron has made it very clear that there is no reason for the court to abandon this now well-established delimitation methodology. Certainly, as she has demonstrated, none of the arguments advanced by Kenya for setting this methodology aside in favor of a different approach justifies doing so. It thus falls to me to apply the three-stage process to the geographical circumstances of this case and to show you the maritime boundary that results from it. Because the geographical circumstances are uncomplicated, so is my task. My presentation will therefore be very straightforward. It will consist of four parts. In Parts One, Two, and Three, I will take you through each of the three stages of the standard delimitation process. In Part Four, I will point out the fallacies in Kenya’s alternative and unprecedented approach to delimitation of the maritime boundary with Somalia, which render it untenable as a matter of law and inequitable in its application. And I will then set out the conclusion that Somalia submits you should draw, namely, that the applicable law and the relevant geographical facts require that the maritime boundary between Somalia and Kenya follow an equidistance line from the land-boundary terminus on the Indian Ocean coast to the outer limits of national jurisdiction. Madam President, Stage One of the three-stage process, as the court is well aware, consists of constructing a provisional equidistance line, provided that construction of such a line is feasible and appropriate. Here, it is both. This is plain from the geographic setting. As you can see here, and at Tab 45 of your judge’s folders, the Indian Ocean coast in the vicinity of the land-boundary terminus between Somalia and Kenya is remarkably straight and smooth, almost a straight line extending all the way from just south of the Horn of Africa in Somalia’s northeast to just north of Kenya’s border with Tanzania. The relevant coast, for the purpose of constructing the provisional equidistance line, lies within this long and remarkably straight coastline. The parties are in agreement in their definition of the relevant coast for purposes of this delimitation. They agree that Somalia’s relevant coast extends from just north of Mogadishu southwestward to the land border with Kenya, a distance of some 733 kilometers, as shown on this slide and at Tab 46. Kenya’s relevant coast runs in the same direction, to the southwest, from the border with Somalia for a distance of approximately 511 kilometers until it reaches the border with Tanzania. Somalia initially measured Kenya’s relevant coast at 466 kilometers. Kenya complained in its rejoinder that Somalia left off 45 kilometers that should have been included. In the Black Sea case, the court held that only those portions of a party’s coast that “generate projections which overlap the projections of the coast of the other party” are “considered as relevant for the purposes of the delimitation.” This was the basis on which Somalia calculated the length of Kenya’s relevant coast. However, to settle what is a minor discrepancy between the parties, Somalia is willing to accept Kenya’s measurement of its own relevant coast. There is thus no dispute as to the relevant coasts of the two parties in this case. Madam President, as these slides show, the relevant coasts in the vicinity of the land-boundary terminus are devoid of any obvious geographical features that might render the construction of an equidistance line infeasible or inappropriate. There are no significant peninsulas or coastal promontories, no significant concavities or convexities, and no offshore features to complicate or render difficult in any way the construction of an equidistance line. In short, the unremarkableness of the relevant coasts makes this a model case for the three-stage process and for the construction of a provisional equidistance line. To be sure, a closer look at these coasts reveals the presence of some small islands on both the Somalia side and the Kenya side of the border. On Somalia’s side, here and at Tab 47, you will find the Diua de Machiaka Islands, a few rocky islets less than half an nautical mile offshore, just to the south of a headland at Ras Cambuni. Kenya too has some small fringing islands immediately adjacent to the continental coast. They are shown here and at Tab 48, specifically Kungamwini and Simambaya Islands. Helpfully, none of these small, close-to-shore features has a significant impact on the direction of the provisional equidistance line, nor do any of them exert an effect on the line that causes prejudice to the other party in any way. To the contrary, Somalia’s and Kenya’s fringing islands balance each other. This is for two reasons. First, all of these features are very close to the continental coast, and they are largely aligned along it. As a result, they do not produce a significant change in the direction of the coast. Second, there are coastal base points from which the provisional equidistance line is drawn on both Somalia’s Diua de Machiaka Islands and Kenya’s Kungamwini Island, which offset each other. As in prior cases, the coastal base points are determined objectively using Caris software as applied to official large-scale charts. Somalia has used United States NGA Nautical Chart 61220 to identify all of the base points. The base points selected by the Caris software on the basis of U.S. NGA Nautical Chart 61220 are shown here and at Tab 49, four are on Somalia’s side, including two on the Diua de Machiaka Islands, and three on Kenya’s side, including one on Kungamwini Island. The relatively small number of base points is a reflection of the regularity of the relevant coast, which has very few turning points, all quite modest, and the absence of any significant indentations or concavities. From these base points, it is a mechanical exercise to construct a provisional equidistance line, which is also produced by the Caris software. As you can see here and at Tab 50, the equidistance line is almost perfectly straight. In fact, it is perfectly straight over its final 262 miles out to the 350-mile limit from Kenya’s coast. This too is a reflection of the virtually straight, unremarkable coastline from which it is drawn. Another way of showing this is by rendering the relevant coast as a perfectly straight line and drawing a perpendicular or bisector intersecting it at the land-boundary terminus. This is what an equidistance line would look like if the coast were perfectly straight. The similarity between the perpendicular and the actual equidistance line, shown here and at Tab 51, is still further evidence of the regularity of the coast and the appropriateness of using the three-stage, equidistance-based methodology to delimit the maritime boundary. So what does Kenya have to say about this? In its countermemorial and its rejoinder, Kenya said practically nothing. It did not propose an alternative chart, nor did it identify any coastal base points, nor did it construct an equidistance line, nor did it challenge the correctness of the base points identified or the equidistance line constructed by Somalia. That was where Kenya’s case stood as of 5 March 2021, 11 days ago. On that date, as part of its application under Rule 56, Kenya submitted a 315-page legal memorandum, which it labeled Appendix 2, Volume 1. In that supplementary written pleading, Kenya challenged Somalia’s depiction of the equidistance line for the first time. First, Kenya objected to Somalia’s use of the official U.S. government chart of the Somalia-Kenyah coast. It contended that British Admiralty Chart 3362 is more accurate and appended that chart to its pleading. Second, Kenya determined the appropriate base points from which to construct an equidistance line based on the British Admiralty chart and Caris software, and it supplied the coordinates of those base points. Third, it constructed its own provisional equidistance line. This slide, which is also at Tab 52, shows the resulting equidistance line alongside Somalia’s equidistance line, which we have superimposed on Kenya’s chart. As you can see, there is very little difference between the two equidistance lines, and this further confirms the appropriateness of the three-stage process and the construction of a provisional equidistance line in the first stage. Somalia expects that the court will determine for itself which chart and which sets of base points to use in constructing the equidistance line, as it and other international tribunals have done in prior maritime delimitation cases. Somalia trusts the court to perform this technical exercise and will be content with the outcome whether the court uses the United States or the British Admiralty chart or another chart that it considers even more reliable. Despite the facility with which Kenya has now identified appropriate coastal base points and produced its own provisional equidistance line, it argues in its belated legal pleading that equidistance itself should be rejected because of the purported unreliability of the base points on its own coast. Kenya suggests that only a site visit can properly determine the location of these base points. This is a novel, as well as untimely, argument. Article 16 of UNCLUS provides, “The baselines for measuring the breadth of the territorial sea determined in accordance with Articles 7, 9, and 10, or the limits derived therefrom, and the lines of delimitation drawn in accordance with Articles 12 and 15, shall be shown on charts of a scale or scales adequate for ascertaining their position. Alternatively, a list of geographical coordinates of points specifying the geodetic datum may be substituted.” Somalia and Kenya itself have satisfied both of these alternative criteria. They have each drawn a line of delimitation based on the official charts of a neutral state, which are of such scale as to be adequate for ascertaining its position, and both Somalia and Kenya have provided a list of geographical coordinates of points specifying the geodetic datum. Nothing more is required. But even if Kenya’s self-serving and unproven argument about unstable base points were tenable, which it is not, the solution would not be to resort to a parallel of latitude, which has no relation to the base points whatsoever, or in this case, to the actual direction of the coast. Instead, it would be to substitute a bisector for the equidistance line. That was the solution chosen by the court in Nicaragua v Honduras, where, due to the unstable nature of the coast at the mouth of the Rio Coco, no reliable coastal base points could be determined. And as we saw a few moments ago, a bisector in this case, drawn from a straight line following the general direction of the relevant coast, closely approximates an equidistance line, whether drawn on the basis of United States NGA Chart 61220 or British Admiralty Chart 3362. Madam President, as Professor Miron explained, and as you can see directly from each of these depictions, this is not only an appropriate case for application of the three-stage methodology, it is an emblematic case for use of that methodology. If that methodology were not appropriate here, in the particularly unremarkable geographical circumstances of this case, it would be difficult to envision a situation where it should be applied. There is one technical issue, however, regarding Stage One of the three-stage process that remains to be addressed. This concerns the starting point for the provisional equidistance line. Somalia contends that the equidistance line, and indeed any boundary line that could be drawn, must begin on the coast at the low-water line. Somalia’s position conforms to Article 5 of UNCLUS, which states that the “normal baseline for measuring the breadth of the territorial sea,” and thus the starting point of any delimitation, “is the low-water line.” Surprisingly, Kenya disagrees. It contends that the maritime boundary should begin on land, some 40 meters inland from the coast, at Boundary Pillar 29. The parties agree that Boundary Pillar 29 is the final marker on the land boundary between Somalia and Kenya before the boundary reaches the sea. Its precise geographic coordinates were disputed in the written pleadings, and Kenya again complains in the legal memorandum it submitted on 5 March that Somalia has incorrectly used astronomical coordinates without converting them to WGS 84. To avoid further argument over a minor technical point, Somalia is prepared to accept the coordinates proposed by Kenya for Boundary Pillar 29. Either way, BP 29 is located approximately 40 meters inland. But fortunately, this is not a unique situation. It was common practice for colonial authorities, such as those from Italy and the United Kingdom, who demarcated this land boundary in the 1920s, not to erect such pillars on the coast itself. Their surveyors knew that boundary markers placed too close to the sea are especially vulnerable to being washed away during major storms or slowly eroded over time. Thus, the same circumstance has arisen previously, and courts and arbitral tribunals have had little difficulty addressing it. They have done so by drawing a straight line connecting the final boundary pillar to the coast at the low-water line, and then by constructing the maritime boundary from that point on the coast. In Ghanavi Cote d’Ivoire, for example, the final pillar demarcating the land boundary between these former British and French colonies was situated some 150 meters inland from the coast. The Atlos Chamber decided to connect that pillar to the coast by means of a straight line, along the same azimuth that connected the last pillar to the one immediately before it. It then constructed a provisional equidistance line, starting from the low-water line. Similarly, the arbitral tribunal in Guyana v Sernam drew a straight line from the final boundary pillar to the low-water line, and then commenced the maritime boundary from that point. The logical solution here, therefore, is a straight line from Boundary Pillar 29 to the low-water line on the coast, and then from that point, construction of a provisional equidistance line. Happily, in this case, the historical record tells us exactly how the straight line from BP 29 to the coast should be drawn. The Boundary Agreement of 17 December 1927 between Italy and the United Kingdom states that the land boundary extends from BP 29 to the sea in a southeasterly direction, “in a straight line at right angles to the general trend of the coastline.” Consistent with that agreement, Somalia has connected BP 29 to the low-water line by means of a straight line perpendicular to the coast, as shown on this slide and at Tab 53. The point at which this perpendicular line intersects the low-water line is therefore the proper starting point for the maritime boundary, and it is from that point that Somalia has constructed its provisional equidistance line. The precise geographical coordinates of that point and of the entire provisional equidistance line are set out at Tab 54 of your judge’s folder. Madam President, in Stage Two of the three-stage process, to which I now turn, the court considers whether there are any special or relevant circumstances that would require an adjustment of the provisional equidistance line in order to achieve an equitable delimitation. The court and other international tribunals have repeatedly made clear that the special or relevant circumstances that could give rise to an adjustment of the provisional equidistance line should be geographical circumstances. The point was emphasized recently by the Atlos Chamber in Ghanavi Cote d’Ivoire, which explained, “According to international jurisprudence, delimitation of maritime areas is to be decided objectively on the basis of the geographic configuration of the relevant coast, and only in extreme circumstances may considerations other than geographical ones become relevant.” Although Kenya chose not to engage directly with the three-stage process in its countermemorial or rejoinder, it did identify three circumstances that, in its submission, rendered the provisional equidistance line inappropriate. What all three circumstances have in common is that none is geographical, none is based on the coastal or maritime geography specific to this case. The first of these circumstances is what Kenya euphemistically calls the “regional practice.” As evidence of such a purported practice, they cite just two maritime boundary agreements, both products of political negotiation rather than judicial settlement, which resulted in boundaries following a parallel of latitude. Both of these agreements were negotiated by a single state, Tanzania. One of them is an agreement between Tanzania and Kenya, to which I will return. The other is with Mozambique. These agreements are, as Professor Miron explained, “race interalios acta in regard to Somalia,” and shed no light whatsoever on the delimitation of an equitable boundary between Somalia and Kenya. International jurisprudence has been clear in this regard. State practice, that is, the practice of other states, is not a special or relevant circumstance that can be invoked to adjust a provisional equidistance line unless it rises to the level of opinio juris, which is not even alleged in this case, nor could it be on the basis of just two political agreements involving the same state. The second circumstance raised by Kenya in opposition to the provisional equidistance line is what it calls the “practice of the parties.” The so-called “practice” that Kenya alleges is Somalia’s purported acceptance of or acquiescence to the parallel of latitude that Kenya claims as the maritime boundary. My distinguished colleagues, Professor Pele and Professor Sands, have already shown you, as was previously made clear in the written pleadings, that there was no such practice, no such acceptance, no such acquiescence on Somalia’s part, nor is there any evidence that in practice Somalia ever manifested an understanding that the parallel of latitude would constitute an equitable basis for the delimitation of its maritime boundary with Kenya. All of the evidence is to the contrary. Like Ghana, in its case against Cote d’Ivoire, Kenya argues that even if the conduct of the parties did not rise to the level of a tacit agreement, it should be regarded as a relevant circumstance sufficient to warrant an adjustment of the provisional equidistance line. The Atlos Special Chamber rejected both of Ghana’s arguments, holding that there was no tacit agreement and that the conduct in question could not be considered a relevant circumstance requiring adjustment of the provisional equidistance line either. It ruled that if it were to reject Ghana’s tacit agreement argument but still consider Cote d’Ivoire’s alleged conduct a relevant circumstance sufficient to require an adjustment to the provisional equidistance line, that “would in effect undermine its earlier finding on the existence of a tacit agreement.” This brings me to the third and final circumstance proffered by Kenya as a reason to dispense with the three-stage process and the provisional equidistance line, its maritime boundary agreements with Tanzania. Professor Miron addressed them briefly yesterday. I will discuss them in greater detail, and I will demonstrate why they cannot be considered relevant circumstances in this case. There are two such agreements. The first, which entered into force in 1976, delimited the Kenya-Tanzania boundary only from the coast to the 12-mile limit of the territorial sea. The second agreement, dated 30 July 2009, delimated the remainder of the maritime boundary between the 12-mile territorial sea limit and the outer limit of the party’s extended continental shelf entitlements. The second agreement established a boundary along a parallel of latitude. Notably, the latter agreement, in July 2009, was made three months after Kenya’s maritime boundary dispute with Somalia had become manifest, as reflected in their Memorandum of Understanding dated 7 April 2009. Kenya was thus fully aware of Somalia’s claim that the boundary should be an equidistance line at the time it agreed with Tanzania on a boundary that would follow a parallel of latitude. This slide, which is also at Tab 55, shows in blue the notional equidistance boundaries between Somalia and Kenya in the north and between Kenya and Tanzania in the south. It also shows in black the territorial sea boundary agreed by Kenya and Tanzania in 1976, and in red, the continental shelf EEZ boundary agreed by those two states in 2009. Kenya claims that the combined effect of an equidistance-based boundary with Somalia and its own 2009 boundary agreement with Tanzania would be a cutoff of its maritime entitlements, especially in the extended continental shelf beyond 200 miles. Before examining whether Kenya, as it alleges, is significantly cut off from its maritime entitlements, it should be emphasized that, as a matter of law, it makes no difference here. Kenya’s agreement with a third state, whatever its impact, is not a relevant circumstance that could merit an that could merit an adjustment of the provisional equidistance line with Somalia. The court confirmed this point in its most recent maritime boundary decision. In Costa Rica v. Nicaragua, Costa Rica argued that it sat in the middle of a three-state concavity, such that an equidistance line with Nicaragua, in conjunction with its prior delimitation agreement with Panama, would produce, quote, “a cutoff effect for Costa Rica’s seaward projections.” Kenya’s recent written submission of 5 March echoes Costa Rica’s pleading. Word for word, it claims that Kenya lies in the middle of a so-called three-state concavity. The court flatly rejected Costa Rica’s argument, as reflected in this sketch map from the judgment. It ruled that the, quote, “overall concavity of Costa Rica’s coast and its relations with Panama” did not merit adjustment of the provisional equidistance line with Nicaragua. As the court explained, in considering whether the alleged cutoff was a relevant circumstance, the only pertinent question was, quote, “whether the seaward projections from Nicaragua’s coast create a cutoff for the projections from Costa Rica’s coast as a result of the concavity of that coast,” end of quote. Because that cutoff, the one caused by Nicaragua’s coastal projections, was insignificant, the court found that no adjustment of the equidistance line was warranted, as the court explained, quote, “A judgment rendered by the court between one of the parties and a third state, or between two third states, cannot,” I emphasize “cannot,” per se affect the maritime boundary between the parties. The same applies to treaties concluded between one of the parties and a third state, end of quote. That is precisely the situation here, and the result can be no different. Indeed, Kenya’s situation is far less sympathetic than Costa Rica’s. Even if the so-called cutoff created by Kenya’s decision to agree to a parallel boundary with Tanzania, at a time when it was fully aware of Somalia’s equidistance claim and the consequences thereof were relevant to this delimitation, which it is not, it would still not make any difference. The purported cutoff is not significant enough to merit an adjustment to the provisional equidistance line. As shown in this slide and at tab 55, the parties’ relevant coasts project to the southeast. The equidistance line between Somalia and Kenya follows exactly the same general direction. It does not cut off either country’s coastal projection. In fact, it does exactly what delimitation lines are supposed to do, as the court prescribed in the Black Sea case, quote, “It allows the adjacent coasts of the parties to produce their effects in terms of maritime entitlements in a reasonable and mutually balanced way,” end of quote. Kenya complains that the combination of an equidistance line with Somalia and its agreed boundary with Tanzania, quote, “substantially narrows Kenya’s coastal projection into its EEZ from a coastal length measured as a straight line of 424 kilometers to only 180 kilometers measured at the 200-mile limit,” end of quote. That may be true as a matter of simple arithmetic, as shown here and at tab 57, but the case law does not support the conclusion that an adjustment to the provisional equidistance line is warranted in circumstances like these. Indeed, Bangladesh was left worse off in its adjudicated delimitations with Myanmar and India after both equidistance lines were substantially adjusted, then Kenya would be, in this case, without an adjustment. The adjustments the two tribunals made to the two provisional equidistance lines left Bangladesh with a narrower coastal projection than Kenya would have. If the court were to adopt an equidistance line as the boundary with Somalia, as you can see, Bangladesh’s coastal facade, rendered as a straight line, measures 340 kilometers, but shrinks to just 103 kilometers at the 200-mile limit after adjustment of the provisional equidistance line in Bangladesh’s favor to relieve it of some of the prejudice caused by its severe coastal concavity. Kenya finds itself in a superior position to Bangladesh without an adjustment of the provisional equidistance line. It thus has no good argument for one here. Kenya further complains that the provisional equidistance line, quote, “prevents Kenya from having any entitlement out to the edge of its continental shelf.” That, too, is irrelevant. There is no right to a boundary that enables a state to reach the maximum limit of its potential continental shelf entitlement. Looking again at the Bangladesh cases, as depicted here and at tab 58, the final delimitation lines adopted by ITLOS and the Annex VII Tribunal stopped Bangladesh’s continental shelf 115 miles short of the outer limit of the entitlement it claimed in its submission to the CLCS. As a tribunal in the Bangladesh-India case observed, quote, “International jurisprudence on the delimitation of the continental shelf does not recognize a general right of coastal states to the maximum reach of their entitlements, irrespective of the geographical situation and the rights of other coastal states.” Bangladesh had a much stronger claim for an adjustment than Kenya. Bangladesh did not cut itself off by an agreement with a third state. It was cut off by the deep, natural concavity of its coast, a circumstance over which it had no control. Kenya, in contrast, voluntarily shortened its own extended continental shelf entitlement by agreement with Kenya. The next slide makes this perfectly clear. In 2009, if Kenya had pressed for an equidistance boundary with Tanzania instead of a parallel of latitude, it would have secured for itself, as shown here and at tab 59, an extended continental shelf all the way to the outer limit of 350 miles, comprising more than 25,000 square kilometers, even if the boundary with Somalia were also an equidistance line. Now you can see exactly how high a price Kenya paid for agreeing with Tanzania to depart from equidistance beyond 200 miles. The effect of Tanzania’s Pemba Island on the equidistance line pushing it northward ended well short of the 200-mile limit. It did not have any impact beyond that distance. It thus appears that Kenya deliberately chose to surrender more than 25,000 square kilometers of maritime space beyond 200 miles for a gain of just 10,725 square kilometers within 200 miles. It is not for Somalia to criticize Kenya’s choice, but Somalia insists that Kenya has no right to make it pay for the consequences of that choice by adjusting the Somalia-Kenya provisional equidistance line as compensation to Kenya. As the arbitral tribunal held in Barbados v. Trinidad and Tobago, bar, quote, “Barbados cannot be required to compensate Trinidad and Tobago for the agreements it has made by shifting Barbados’s maritime boundary in favor of Trinidad and Tobago,” end of quote. In its legal memorandum of 5 March, Kenya added a potpourri of other so-called relevant circumstances that purportedly warrant an adjustment or even an abandonment of the provisional equidistance line. In this new submission, Kenya gave particular emphasis to the alleged interests of its fisherfolk and the purported need to protect its security. Neither of these circumstances is geographical, and neither justifies a departure from equidistance. In regard to fisherfolk, Kenya has helpfully provided us with maps showing what it calls the, quote, “prominent fishing grounds they frequent.” Our cartographic experts have georeferenced them and superimposed them on this sketch map, which is at tab 60. As you can see, all of these allegedly prominent fishing grounds are to the south, that is, on the Kenyan side of the equidistance line. There is thus no impact on Kenya’s fisherfolk. But even if, quad known, there were, the fishing practices of Kenyan fisherfolk are not a relevant circumstance for determining the course of the maritime boundary in this case. This is because, even if it is assumed that they might suffer some injury, no evidence has been submitted of any potentially catastrophic impact on the livelihood and economic well-being of the population, as this court’s jurisprudence, from the Gulf of Maine case through the judgment in Nicaragua v. Colombia, requires before such interests can be taken into account in the delimitation of a maritime boundary. In any event, although it is under no legal obligation to do so, Somalia is willing to enter into a fisheries agreement with Kenya to secure the ability of fisherfolk from both states to continue exercising their livelihoods in the areas they have traditionally frequented. But this does not affect the delimitation of the maritime boundary. In regard to protection of Kenya’s security, it cannot be denied that, at this point in historical time, the difficulties faced by Somalia impair its ability to prevent cross-border piracy or IUU fishing. But this is not a relevant circumstance justifying adjustment of the equidistance line either. Until now, the court has been willing to take account of a state’s security interest in delimiting a maritime boundary, only to prevent the line from crossing closely in front of the state’s coasts. That is not even remotely the situation here. Even Kenya does not argue that it is. Where, like here, the provisional delimitation line does not cross in front of a state’s coast, the court has been unwilling, in its prior cases, to treat the alleged security interests as a circumstance sufficient to justify adjustment of the line. Indeed, it would be a dangerous precedent to draw a boundary based on which state is strong enough to enforce it, which is what Kenya’s argument ultimately boils down to. Might cannot be allowed to substitute for legal right, in this case Somalia’s right to an equitable boundary drawn in accordance with the rules of international law and the procedures of maritime delimitation that the court has consistently applied. Accordingly, Madam President, none of the circumstances invoked by Kenya, either in its formal written pleadings or its newest supplement, or as Professor Maroun refers to it, Kenya’s rejoinder bees, constitute grounds for abandoning the three-stage process or for adjusting the provisional equidistance line in Kenya’s favor at stage two of this process. The result is that, at the end of the second stage of the process, the provisional equidistance line remains intact. No adjustments are required or justified. This brings us to the third and final stage of the three-stage process. As the court explained in the Black Sea case, at this stage, its role is to check whether any disproportionality exists in the ratios of the coastal lengths of each state and the maritime areas falling on either side of the delimitation line. In its jurisprudence, since the Black Sea case, the court has elaborated on the nature of this disproportionality test. It is not to determine whether the provisional equidistance line, as adjusted or not in stage two, distributes the disputed maritime space proportionately, but to determine whether that distribution is significantly disproportional. In both Nicaragua v. Colombia and Costa Rica v. Nicaragua, the court explained that it is only when there is a gross disproportion that the provisional equidistance line will be considered inequitable. Unless the distribution of maritime space is grossly disproportionate, the court will not adjust or further adjust the equidistance line, and that line will be deemed to constitute an equitable boundary. By way of example, in Nicaragua v. Colombia, the court did not consider a coastal length ratio of 8.2 to 1 and a relevant area ratio of 3.4 to 1 to be so disproportionate as to render the delimitation inequitable. Here, the provisional equidistance line produces no disproportionality, let alone one that can even remotely be considered significant or gross. This is perfectly clear when the test established by the court for stage three of the three-stage process is properly performed. As I explained earlier, there is now no disagreement on the relevant coasts or their lengths. The parties are agreed that Somalia’s relevant coast is 733 kilometers long, and Somalia has accepted Kenya’s measurement of its own relevant coast at 511 kilometers. The ratio of the parties’ relevant coasts is therefore 1.43 to 1 in favor of Somalia. The concept of the relevant area was defined succinctly and clearly by the court in its 2012 judgment in Nicaragua v. Colombia, quote, “The relevant area comprises that part of the maritime space in which the potential entitlements of the parties overlap,” end of quote. This was reaffirmed six years later in the judgment in Costa Rica v. Nicaragua. Costa Rica had protected the relevant coast seaward in a way that encompassed broad areas that had previously been awarded to Colombia in 2012, and where consequently neither Costa Rica nor Nicaragua could have potential entitlements. The court rejected Costa Rica’s approach on that basis, ratifying the principle of the Nicaragua-Colombia case that, quote, “The relevant area comprises that part of the maritime space in which the potential entitlements of the parties overlap,” end of quote. Accordingly, maritime spaces where one or both parties do not have a potential entitlement cannot constitute part of the relevant area for purposes of stage three of the three-stage process. This slide shows the maritime space where the potential entitlements of Somalia and Kenya overlap within 200 miles of their relevant coasts. All of the shaded space on this slide falls within 200 miles of both parties. It thus constitutes the relevant area for purposes of delimitation of the maritime boundary within 200 miles. This slide, which is also at tab 61, shows how the provisional equidistance line divides this relevant area between the two parties. As you can see, its application allocates more maritime space to Kenya than to Somalia by a difference of 110,236 square kilometers to Kenya versus 103,627 square kilometers to Somalia. The slide also shows you a comparison between the ratio of the parties’ coastal lengths and the ratio of relevant areas distributed to the parties by the provisional equidistance line. The ratios are 1.43 to 1 in favor of Somalia for the relevant coast, as we have already seen, and 0.94 to 1 in favor of Kenya for the division of the relevant area. The equidistance line thus allocates more maritime space to Kenya than it would merit if the distribution was strictly proportional to the ratio of the lengths of their relevant coasts. There is thus no significant disproportionality here, let alone one that is unfavorable to This slide shows the relevant area when the area beyond 200 miles, where both parties have submitted overlapping claims to the Commission on the Limits of the Continental Shelf, has been added. Here, we have combined the relevant area within 200 miles and the relevant area beyond 200 miles. The equidistance line divides these combined areas by distributing 188,749 square kilometers to Somalia and 130,785 square kilometers to Kenya, as shown here and at tab 62. to Somalia and 130,785 square kilometers to Kenya, as shown here and at tab 62. This is a ratio of 1.44 to 1 in favor of Somalia. This is almost identical to the ratio of the parties’ coastal lengths, which is 1.43 to 1 in favor of Somalia. The equidistant line thus passes the court’s disproportionality test. There is no disproportionality here, let alone the kind of significant or gross disproportionality that would justify an adjustment of the equidistant line. Madam President, the equidistant line therefore constitutes an equitable boundary throughout the relevant area, from the starting point on the coast to the outer limit of national jurisdiction in the extended continental shelf. Somalia respectfully submits that this is the boundary international law requires the court to adopt in this case. I come now to the final part of my presentation, which is to bring to your attention the fallacies in Kenya’s unprecedented approach to delimitation of the maritime boundary. Its so-called “parallel of latitude” delimitation methodology, or in its most recent phraseology on 5 March, the “latitudinal” delimitation methodology. The first major flaw in their approach is that they have performed the delimitation exercise completely backwards. They have started at the end of the process by opening with a conclusion that the boundary should follow a parallel of latitude. This conclusion is assumed by the very nomenclature they give to the so-called methodology they have chosen to apply, a parallel of latitude or latitudinal delimitation methodology. Kenya is undeterred by the fact that neither this court nor any other, nor any arbitral tribunal, has ever recognized the existence of, let alone applied, such a methodology to delimit a boundary between two states. Never. Kenya illustrates how it wishes this court to be the first to do so. To begin, they draw a parallel of latitude from the land boundary terminus to the outer limit of the extended continental shelf. Then they purport to demonstrate that this preordained line distributes the relevant area proportionally. This step is not as mundane as it may seem, at least not as implemented by Kenya. By artificially manipulating the size of the relevant area, as I will demonstrate in a few moments, they purport to establish that the parallel of latitude does divide the area proportionally. And finally, they argue that proportionality equals equity, and that, as a consequence, the parallel of latitude is an equitable line that should be adopted as the maritime boundary. This, as I have said, is a completely backwards approach to maritime delimitation. If this were a football match, it would be like starting with the final score, then going to penalty kicks to achieve that outcome, then playing the second half of regulation time, then the first half, and concluding with the national anthems of the two sides. But this is not the World Cup. It’s the world court. And here maritime delimitation is performed in the proper order, from beginning to end, rather than the reverse. Stage one, followed by stage two, and then stage three, before identifying the equitable line of delimitation, which is the conclusion that international law requires. That is the proper court-ordained methodology for delimiting a maritime boundary. There is no such thing as a “parallel of latitude” delimitation methodology. Kenya’s second major error is to presume that maritime delimitation is based on proportionality, and that only a delimitation line that distributes the disputed maritime space proportionally can be regarded as equitable. This approach is contrary to the long-established precedent of this court. As far back as the Libya-Malta case, the court declared that “the use of proportionality as a method in its own right is wanting of support in the practice of states, in the public expression of their views at the Third UN Conference on the Law of the Sea, or in the jurisprudence.” More recently, in the Black Sea case, the court confirmed that “there is no principle of proportionality as such which bears on the establishment of the provisional equidistant line.” The court went on to explain, “The purpose of delimitation is not to apportion equal shares of the area, nor indeed proportional shares. The test of disproportionality is not in itself a method of delimitation. It is rather a means of checking whether the delimitation line arrived at by other means needs adjustment because of a significant disproportionality in the ratios between the maritime areas.” Yet Kenya bases its argument in favor of a parallel of latitude on that line’s purported equal distribution of the relevant area as between itself and Somalia. This is a wrong approach as a matter of law, as the court’s jurisprudence makes abundantly clear, and it is equally wrong as a matter of geographical fact, which Kenya manipulates to lead to its desired conclusion. Here’s how they do it. As we have seen, the relevant area, as defined by the court in Nicaragua v Colombia and Costa Rica v Nicaragua, is the maritime space where the potential entitlements of the parties overlap. That area is presented again here and at tab 63 in the shaded solid green area. To get the result they want, Kenya inflates the relevant area, shown here as the area marked with vertical green lines, by adding maritime space where only Somalia, but not Kenya, has potential entitlement, since it is within 200 miles of Somalia’s coast but beyond 200 miles from Kenya’s. Kenya also includes in its version of the relevant area substantial maritime space beyond 200 miles of both coasts, which only Somalia, but not Kenya, has claimed in its submission to the CLCS. Kenya has no potential entitlement to either of these areas, within and beyond 200 miles, and there are thus no overlapping entitlements there. As a consequence, they cannot properly be considered part of the relevant area. Kenya’s unmistakable purpose in including these areas is to artificially inflate the relevant area, and in particular the part of it that its parallel of latitude distributes to Somalia, in order to give the appearance of an equal or almost equal distribution as between the two states. Kenya defends this slate of hand by refusing to accept that the relevant area is limited to the area where the parties have overlapping entitlements. This is what it says in the rejoinder in respect of the relevant area. “Kenya does not agree with Somalia’s approach of identifying the areas of overlapping potential entitlements.” This, of course, is not Somalia’s approach. It’s the court’s approach, and Somalia has done no more than give effect to it. For this, Kenya criticizes Somalia for “the relevant area being incorrectly defined as the area of overlapping entitlements.” On this issue, Kenya’s dispute, we submit, is fundamentally with the court’s jurisprudence, not with Somalia’s adherence to it. Kenya defends its disagreement with the court’s established definition of the relevant area by reliance on a treatise on maritime delimitation authored by Messrs. Fietta and Cleverly. Madam President, Kenya did not read this treatise carefully. This is what the distinguished authors actually wrote, but which Kenya chose to ignore. “The relevant area is usually identified by reference to the overlap of the state’s coastal projections, extending to the outer limit of the area to be delimited.” The authors go on to explain that, on this basis, maritime areas that “are located more than 200 miles from one of the two states or beyond its outer continental shelf limits are not part of the relevant area.” The author’s definition of the relevant area thus tracks perfectly with that of the court and with Somalia’s application of it. This underscores the complete lack of support for Kenya’s position in either the jurisprudence or the learned commentary. Compounding its error, Kenya repeatedly attempts to attribute to Somalia its own groundless argument that maritime delimitation must be based on proportionality. We were stunned when we saw in Kenya’s rejoinder, but could not help but see, that Kenya repeated this allegation four times within 16 paragraphs. According to Kenya, its parallel of latitude “produces the almost equal division of maritime areas between Kenya and Somalia that Somalia has recognized as equitable.” Kenya even has the audacity to refer to this as “Somalia’s proportionality test.” Madam President, Somalia has never recognized the parallel of latitude as equitable, nor has it ever argued that maritime delimitation law requires an equal division of the disputed maritime area. Kenya’s attempt to put its words into Somalia’s mouth is a classic case of what psychoanalysts would diagnose as projection. Freud described this phenomenon in his Further Remarks on the Neuropsychoses of Defense. Whatever may be Kenya’s psychological motivation for attempting to shift the blame for a bad idea to Somalia, our position has been consistent. The boundary must be delimited by the court’s three-stage process. The construction of a provisional equidistant line is feasible and appropriate. There are no special or relevant circumstances warranting an adjustment to that line, and the equidistant line distributes the disputed maritime area in a way that is not significantly disproportionate. It thus constitutes the equitable solution that Unclos and the court’s jurisprudence require. Somalia has never advocated that the law requires an equal division of disputed maritime area. Madam President, in addition to all of its other infirmities, Kenya’s parallel of latitude fails to deliver an equitable solution. This is what an equitable solution looks like. It is the one Somalia proposes, and you have seen it before. The coast is a nearly straight line running from northeast to southwest. The coasts of the parties project to the southeast. As you can see here, the equidistant line permits the coast of both parties to project in that direction without being cut off to the full extent of their 200-mile entitlements and beyond into the extended continental shelf. Kenya is not cut off by an equidistant boundary with Somalia. Here, in contrast, is an inequitable solution. As you can see here and at tab 64, the parallel of latitude causes a significant cutoff of Somalia’s coastal projection in the part of its relevant coast adjacent to the boundary with Kenya. In contrast, there is no such cutoff on the Kenyan side of the line. Kenya’s coast is allowed to project itself to the southeast in an unimpeded fashion. In fact, in the northern third of the area attributed to Kenya by this division of the disputed maritime area, Kenya’s coast is permitted to project itself well above 90 degrees to more than 120 degrees at Somalia’s expense. This is a far cry from the mutually balanced way of sharing a cutoff that maritime delimitation law requires. The bankruptcy of Kenya’s approach is further illustrated by a new sketch map that was included in its written submission of 5 March. This is Kenya’s depiction of how the relevant coast supposedly projects seaward. What is blindingly obvious, despite all of the busyness on this sketch, is that to draw projections due eastward in parallel with a parallel of latitude, they invented a so-called coastal configuration, shown on the left, which does not even come close to representing the actual direction of the coast. As highlighted here, Kenya’s imaginary coast runs due north and south at an angle of 0 degrees. This bears scant relation to the actual direction of the real coast, which runs from northeast to southwest, despite Kenya’s effort to obscure it with enough arrows to fill an extraordinarily large quiver. What Kenya has done here is completely refashion the coastal geography in violation of the most basic principles of maritime delimitation. The conclusion, Madam President, is therefore inescapable. The parallel of latitude proposed by Kenya results from no known or recognized or judicially sanctioned method of delimitation, and it fails to produce the equitable boundary that the law requires. In contrast, the equidistant line, which results from the standard three-stage process the court has regularly employed in the delimitation of maritime boundaries, is an equitable boundary between Somalia and Kenya, and it should be adopted by the court as the boundary between these two states. Madam President, members of the court, this concludes my presentation. I thank you for your kind courtesy and patient attention, and I ask that you call upon my esteemed colleague, Mr. Edward Craven, to address you next.
I thank Mr. Reichler.